Good evening. I'd like to call the Trotwood Madison City School District regular session. Oh, this is the work session, I'm sorry, work session, August fourth, 2022 to order. Here at our Trotwood Madison City Schools District Board Office. Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Davis. Mrs. Cherry.
Yes.
Mrs. Judith Freeman.
Yes.
And Ms. Moore.
Yes. The meeting has now been called to order. Please join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I now need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any changes? Yes. Um, on the personnel agenda, under section A two, we have a teacher, David Sykes. The amount for salary.
We saw that.
Okay, it's sixty-eight thousand and not. Right, exactly, two oh one.
Okay, yeah. It's A two, right?
Uh huh.
Okay, wait a minute.
Let's see, A two. I, I think that would be a position I think we would all take, six hundred and eighty.
I don't, I think that's a position that this district could not afford, okay?
Right.
Yeah, that was gonna be a serious conversation, Dr. Cosby, okay?
Good thing I cleared that one up. Um, also, we would like to move the, um, board report to after executive session.
Okay. Okay. Sure, I'm, I'm looking under A two, I'm looking for, oh, I can't find it.
I'm sorry, so on the the first A two, certified new hires.
Is it A? Okay.
There are two, there's one that says adjustments, it's above that, at the top of the page. Or are you looking on board docs?
I am.
I'm sorry, I was looking, um. Here's where I am. Oh, okay. Well, I, yes, I found it, thank you, it's at the top of the page. Uh huh. Under A two. Yes.
Two, um, correction. And that's sixty-eight, two?
Two oh one.
Okay. Okay, and then, under the board items, you want to move the board items to the bottom of the agenda, correct?
Yes.
And so, the board items will appear as item, okay, as, um, item ten? Well.
Actually, if, if we just take that up, out, everything moves up, correct?
Right. Okay.
Perfect, anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Anything else, board? Okay. Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mrs. Judith Freeman.
Yes.
Ms., Mrs. Cherry.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
And Ms. Moore.
Yes, the agenda has now been adopted. Um, we are gonna go right to item two, which is the treasurer's report, Ms. Allen.
I have two items for you this evening.
Yes.
The first one is for information only, well, both of them are for information. Um, the first one under three A, well, two A.
Yes, two A.
The, two A, under, is the approval of minutes for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, July seventh, twenty twenty-two, and July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Um, three B should actually read discussion of, um, general fund appropriation budget, and that does include the schools and the departments. And what I wanted to do is just to go over quickly, not, not all in detail, just to, so you can have the information. But we're really proud of this, lot of work, lot of hard work, um, went into this. We actually had, um, separate, um, sessions with every school principal, plus every department head, and they went over their budget. So this book includes, um, the Board of Education's budget, the superintendent's budget, the treasurer's budget, curriculum's budget, the student services budget, the, um, human resources budget, operations budget, maintenance's budgets, technology, transportation, all five school buildings, ELC, um, Madison Park, Westbrook Village, Middle School, and the high school budgets. And then the last tab is your district-wide budget. And that is, if, if the expenditures are inclusive for the district-wide, that's a district-wide budget, and that budget is the, the highest, um, in the amount of about four million dollars. And so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. There's other, um, items, if you look on the fir- first page of the book, you just see a letter from myself talking about, um, what the budget is, um, the goals that we, um, have set for FY twenty-three. Then it has your, um, your, um, five-year forecast that you guys approved, um, back in May. And then, um, the budget is broken down by object and function, and then it's reconciled with the five-year forecast. And then it has all the different budgets. So, at your leisure, um, please, just, if you want to review this, uh, please, at your leisure, review it, if you have any questions, please, um, let me know. But this is like my Bible, most people's Bible, I just put it up in my, um, credenza, and if, uh, we have questions on different things, then I, um.
I just, well, thank you, 'cause, um, I believe the board had asked for this. Department, uh, by department, as well as building, so.
We've, we've done this every year since I've gotten here.
Okay.
So we, there, there has been a book, there's a book like this, yes.
There's been a book, okay.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yeah. So, that is all I had this evening. If by chance, we didn't figure, just say hypothetically, the gas and, and, um, the maintenance, uh, budget, I think that's where fuel is, um, we would increase that appropriation. If within the budget, um, a line item may need more immediate expense than they need in, in classroom supplies or office supply. They can change those within their budget. We don't obviously do new books. But we, we encourage everyone to stay within their budget, and we do understand there are some opportunity or some, some situations where they, we might have to increase the appropriation.
Okay, so how do you initially, you know, because when you do the forecast, you're doing just that, you're forecasting. So, is that the same for the principals or directors, when you're issuing, to come up with how much you will give a different school or department?
Exactly, okay, so, what I do is, we start with the five-year forecast, so every, all of this feeds into the five-year forecast. So whatever the five-year forecast, everything has to align with the five-year forecast. So if people want this, 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 and it's not aligning, um, nope, we gotta reduce that amount and that amount. So, um, we have everybody to come to the table, um, Dr. Cosby, the cabinet, and that individual comes to the table, and we actually sit down and go line by line on everyone's budget. And someone might say, okay, this is what I, I need, there's a new program or something, this is what I need. Curriculum might say, well, we, we'll, we'll take that and we'll put that in our budget, and so we'll, we can monitor that expenditure. But, um, all the departments and schools have their own. So, so. Yeah, and I, I said, like I said, um, it takes a lot of work, but this just holds everybody accountable. And I know Dr. Cosby's theme this year is culture and accountability, and so this book, um, holds everybody accountable to their, their monies that have been allocated to them. And it's not, you know, it's not, we take the same budget and, and do three percent, we don't do, we start all over. So we're looking at trends, and so we, if somebody says, okay, I need such and such, we look at the trends, and I would say, okay, you've only spent so much, why do you need so much more? They then justify why they need so, so much more, and the group then decides, okay, I think that, that's a good enough explanation, then we'll, we will increase that line. But it's not adding three percent or two percent or whatever. We actually go through a process to make sure that this adequately, um, we look at, um, the budgets and the money and the resources that we're gonna spend for the kids.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, it'll be good reading to come back and ask questions, for sure. Thank you. Superintendent's report, Dr. Cosby.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello, Mr. Davis, good to see you. Um, on my report, I'd like to start with approval of the Maxim Healthcare Staffing Agreement, and again, tonight's, just for information. Um, Maxim Healthcare is, um, a service that we use to provide, um, services such as, um, therapists, PTs, those type of services. And we only, I know one of the questions that was asked was, do we pay if we don't use the service? And we do not. In our contract, we do not, um, pay if we do not use the service. So, it's a, really, um, a good contract that we have with them. We've used them before, and I don't know if anybody had any questions. If you go to page sixteen in this, it will tell the ones that we're looking at now and the rates. So, page sixteen of the contract, and you can find that on board docs. Behavior tech, um, and aid, RN, LPN, school psych, intervention specialist, social workers. I think I have mentioned to you that, um, we use more than one company, because right now, when it's so hard to find these services, that's why we end up using more than one company. So I would like to have that approved for next meeting. Um, B is approval of the MC ESC Psych Assistant Contract. And I did ask why the terminology on that was assistant instead of just psychologist? And it, it is the way they write it, it is the same, that, that cost for it, I believe we, um, said was a hundred and three. It is a full-time employee. Unlike the employees that we would get from Maxim who do the psych work, they, they are hourly when they come in and work. But this, um, one from the ESC is a full-time employee.
Which one were we looking?
We're looking at, um.
The ESC, right?
Mm-hmm, the ESC. Okay, and item C.
I have a question on this one.
Oh, sure, uh huh.
Okay, how many schools or colleges do we currently have?
Well, when we get to the discussion, I can tell you, do we have one per building? Tracy?
We don't, we don't have one per building, we have two that are employees from problem access. There's one that's full-time at the middle school, and then there's, um, we said, Emily's full-time at high school. And all the problem access. And then, we have a psych site that is contracted with Maxim, who works with the A five buildings. So she works with ELC, Madison Park, and Westbrook Village. And so the psych assistant supports her, she has the three buildings. So instead of us hiring another full-time psych who's probably abused, we have a psych assistant that's supporting.
So the psych assistant is the price of a full-time, I mean, a real psychologist, though?
That's what Montgomery County ESC charges, yes.
And they're, if you look at the contract, my understanding is, they're providing us a, a psychologist, I mean, a, yes, a psychologist who is working with this person?
So you get two people, or is it?
This is one full-time each.
Right, that's what I'm saying, the one.
Full-time psych assistant.
One full-time psych assistant.
Yes.
So two in-house, that's middle school and high school.
That works on employees by private max.
Right. One Maxim.
Yes.
That is the staffing company.
Yes.
So they'll provide one, and that's for the three elementarys. And then, the one psych assistant is from ESC.
She's from the ESC.
And she, is she a floater, or?
Yes, she supports, she mostly supports the, the eighty-five site.
Okay.
Eighty thirty-five.
But if there are some things that the middle school site or the high school site maybe you might do, like when you help us home visit, go get a signature, something like that.
Do we know how many visits or what the caseload was for high psychologists? I don't know if that's easily something.
Yes, so, I think there's another, um, place on the agenda where it talks about the services or something.
Yes, under discussion.
Okay, so we'll get to that, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
She's prepared to report for that. Okay, um, next we have the approval of the Early Learning Center's activity, purpose statement, and budget. And, as you can see, the principal, um, has carryover of fifteen hundred dollars. Their fundraising will be five thousand dollars. Their total proposed income is five thousand, and total revenue, six thousand five hundred dollars. For expenditures, they, um, plan to spend a thousand dollars on student incentives, snacks, awards, and PBIS, and then staff incentives of gifts and meals at a cost of two thousand. So, with the money, they intend to spend three thousand dollars total for the year, and that is less than their proposed income.
So, um, Ms. Allen, why can't they spend the full amount?
They, they determine that, I don't determine that. They, they submit those.
So they just wanna carry some home?
Exactly, exactly, so they determine what they're gonna spend.
And I'm sure if something comes up, she would have the opportunity to spend that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, okay.
I, I, I don't, I don't control it like that.
She's being safe rather than, than sorry. Okay, um, next we have the approval of the Stepping Stones Group Contract. And Stepping Stones provides a speech-language pathologist at seventy-eight dollars per hour. Again, um, if we look at the payment terms, the school district is billed on actual hours of service provided by the contractor's employee. So we don't have anything unless they provide the service.
This is not our first year with Stepping Stones, is it?
No, it's not.
Okay, so we would, we, we would have data on this, too?
Maybe it's Cumberland.
Cumberland, okay. So we would have the numbers as far as how many students access it, okay.
Thank you.
Do we use ESC for that one time?
Will be there. Yes.
Okay, under E, we have, um, approval of impractical to transport list of schools. And you have that in front of you on board docs. What that means is, these we provide, and, and really the school is supposed to let them know, but we send a letter, and they send that to the parents, letting them know that, um, they are eligible for in lieu of transportation. And so, you know, as the year goes on, we'll be providing in lieu of money to people who we can't transport. But these are the schools that fall under that. Okay, and next is the personnel agenda. For our personnel agenda, A one is a recommendation for the approval of the following certified resignations for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. A two is a recommendation for approval of the following certified new hires for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. A two, recommendation for the approval of the following certified adjustments in steps based on employment verification. A three, recommendation for the approval of the following certified letters, unit training for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. B one is recommendation for the approval of the following classified rec- resignations for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. B two is a recommendation for the approval of the following classified new hires for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. B three is a recommendation for the approval of the following classified letters, unit training for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. C one is recommendation for the approval of the following two-year administrative contracts. And that's all.
The coordinator in central office, what position is that for, what coordinator position?
The coordinator position, oh, it's, oh, Ms. Poohler? No, you're talking with the one above it, um, Leslie Allen. That position is the pre-K five, um, special ed coordinator. So that position, we didn't have anyone in it, and we've been trying to hire. It's not a new position.
There's a, a bonus attached to that?
It's a special ed position, and we've been trying to hire it for quite a while. So we had.
Is that a yes? Is that a yes?
Yes.
I think the only problem is that when we did the, um, adoption of that resolution to do that, it was for teachers.
It's only for teachers.
Yes.
I thought it was ha- hard to find positions.
It was teacher.
I'll check it.
Yeah, I think it was teachers.
Yeah, so what we could do, um, is, you know, on this particular one, we could omit that for now, or if you, if you'd like to omit the sign-on bonus, or would you like to take it, table that particular one and bring it back to the board?
Well, it's for information, we're not voting tonight, I'll have it.
This is for action, this, this item says for action.
Oh, that's right, we do action on the personnel agenda.
Yeah.
And I would understand that, 'cause I would wanna know if I'm hard at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, we can move forward with the hire, or do you want to, um, how would you like to handle that?
Um, I need to go back and look about the bonus, let's hire for the salary, we will check on the bonus. I, I would, I think I would want her to feel confident that this position is.
Yeah, that's not a problem at all. I just need to, we need to make that note, Ms. Allen, in the personnel agenda. Item C one, that coordinator for central office is the salary only with consideration of revisiting
Right.
the information on the bonus.
Okay, we got that, thank you. So I am asking for approval of this agenda, of the personnel agenda.
One other question.
Mm-hmm.
So on the letters training, I don't know that I. Go ahead. Oh, you're voting on this?
Yeah, yeah, both of us are at order, okay. Okay, um, I would like a motion to accept the superintendent's item, personnel agenda item as presented with the changes specified on C one, removing the one-time sign-on bonus for the coordinator in central office, Leslie Allen, and also, item, where is that, A two, uh, with the correction for David Sykes, correct salary of sixty-eight, two oh one. I need a motion.
I'll move.
Been properly moved and seconded, now I'm gonna open it up for discussion.
Okay, so on the letters training, do we modify or change, 'cause I don't know that I've seen three thirty before.
So if you'll remember, it's based on the, uh, modules that they do. But we did make a change when it came to, um, classified staff. They will only get paid for modules, they will not get paid, remember, for the six hours of extra in-person online. So we have made that modification in regards to the classified staff.
And who, who is letters intended for? I think initially it was highly recommended for tape room space.
I think it was required for the, the younger grades, and then it was highly recommended for middle and high school, um, teachers. And then for classified, because of their interactions with students on a daily basis, um, we had decided that we would include them as well. Um, initially, we were paying them the extra, I think it's an extra six hours. Right. Um, but then we said, that part's not going to, because that happens, you know, that, the other modules they can do at home on their own time.
Yes, and when we're coming up with this, and I think I said that before, um, because we're spending dollars, uh, it has to come to the board for discussion first, even in changing the amount. And this is just, uh, this is our job, and this is what we, we have to do. It is no punt or anything intended. So I wanna put that out there as well. Uh, so, how do we know for the teachers that need it? How, how is it, um, reviewed?
Remember, they don't get paid unless they pass the.
Right, and, and I'm not saying that, because I understand letters i- is
Right.
what is being used.
Right.
Yeah, nationwide, so, how do we know that they learn whatever it is?
Oh, that they've learned what it is they are studying.
In fact, through the walkthroughs.
Right.
Yeah, that's all I'm trying to get at.
Yes, I understand, I'm sorry, I, I misunderstood the question, but I do see what you're saying. Yes, that will be a part of the look fours when our principals and, um, assistant principals are going into buildings, you know, for their walkthroughs. So they will look to make sure that teachers are using the strategies that come along with letters.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know you told us it was different prices for different modules, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and how was the original price set? Because that was based on what the district wanted, correct?
Yes, I think it was based on the amount of time that they took. Um, do you mind if, Mr. Warner?
Would you please tell us how?
Give us more specifics.
Because we just wonder how that rate came up. Um, I, I thought it was something standard, then I found out that it is based on the district, so.
Yeah, so, um, every module, oh, sorry, every unit has a number of sessions. Each of those sessions has a time, an hourly time that is associated with the session, so every unit represents a, a hour, is it correct? That soberous wager was. So this lawyer who is the creator of letters has suggested that it takes for a teacher to complete that for that session. So calculating how much we pay, I know the committee pay rates times those number of hours and then we rounded it to like, you know, something like three hundred and fifty dollar present. You know, and like, the different amount, sort of, how it was, of an amount that would be there.
Okay, thank you.
Well, there were more things, sorry.
Yeah.
At the end of like a unit, then there is the online module where it's like live, live instruction. For that piece, then teachers are getting the straight committee pay for those classes. They come to about six hours. For the six actual content hours.
And that's only for teachers?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Being done? Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll? Okay, Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Ms. Warner?
Yes. Motion passes with the change items in A2 for the correct compensation of sixty-eight oh two and the, I think it was C1, item of the CO coordinator without the bonus. It's table for now until we get further information, it is salary only. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Discussion items? A is discussion of outside services that are used in the district.
So Mrs. Mallory has a nice graph that shows that information and she's willing to share that with us.
So the document is there, and good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I know there were some questions, concerns about some of the outside services that we contract with. And so I tried to put together a document that talks about some of the major services where we spend, you know, a considerable amount of money. So you all could just kind of look at it and get an idea. So the first one is Samaritan Behavior Health. So Samaritan Behavior Health, last, and this will be last school year because we haven't really moved forward yet with next school years. So last year, we had three point five therapists. So I know you remember, we talked often about them having trouble finding us mental health therapy supports. We've contracted with Samaritan for years when, when the district decided to move away from Eastway, which was, was a prior therapy service. So the district began contracting with Samaritan Behavior Health. And so last year, they were able to give us three and a half therapists. So there was three full-time therapists and one part-time therapist to work with our students across the district. Their caseloads with Samaritan, they can service up to twenty-five students and that cost is just the total cost that we end up paying last school year in that last column there. And again, those therapists, they can serve up to twenty-five students. They, priority are our students with disabilities. If there's a student who has mental health therapy services written in their IEP, then those students get priority with the in-school, in-house therapist. And then as a part of the contract, Samaritan has agreed definitely to support our students in any other way that they may need some support with it, whether it's with referrals. They're there to do, they can do groups with teachers and things like that. So whatever the other amount of time allotted for. But most of their caseloads are pretty full, especially with everything that Trotwood, you know, has been through with COVID, tornadoes, everything, so.
So you say up to twenty-five students, so?
On a caseload, per therapist.
Case load, okay, so each one has up to? So what's the, is that the number? So are you saying they have seventy-five and then have, I mean?
That's all that that, they could service last year. We needed more per building, we just didn't have them.
Okay, so they maxed out the number that they could serve? That's my question. All right, thank you.
Yeah. So the next one is Stepping Stones, which is AKA Cumberland. And last year, we contracted with Cumberland to have two full-time speech therapists. And speech therapists can have up to eighteen to twenty students on their caseloads. And with speech therapy, it's got a lot to do with just minutes, the number of minutes of service that a student needs for their therapy. And that's determined by the IEP team. And those therapists service, some students have a speech-only IEP and then there are some students that have an IEP that, there's a different disability that is the primary disability. But speech therapy is just the related service that goes along with it as well. And so in our district right now, we have two speech therapists that are contracted with Cumberland. We have two that are from the Montgomery County ESC. And we have one that's a Trotwood employee.
Okay, yeah, the one employee.
Yeah, there's just one that's a Trotwood employee.
And how many students do we serve?
How many students receive speech therapy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I don't have that number right offhand, I'm sorry. We have at least three hundred plus students that have a designated IEP with a disability, but all of them don't receive speech therapy. So I don't have that number right offhand, I'm sorry.
Can you get that number?
I sure can.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
And even the report, if we could have, Dr. Cosby, if we could have it, I can barely see it. Okay, so?
She did bring hard copy.
Okay, thank you, I'm glad I said something.
Well, you know, we're trying not to pass so much papers.
I know, I know.
So I said, hold on to it unless they need it.
It wasn't attached to board docs.
And we will get it there next time, yeah.
That's where it should be, okay, thank you, we appreciate it. I know it's a work in progress.
Exactly, getting it all together on time.
So with the information that you would like for students with disabilities, is it, would you like a document with students with disabilities so you could see the numbers with all? Or you just are concerned about speech therapy?
All.
Okay. So the next item is Maxim that we talked about on several occasions. So last school year, we used Maxim for a school psychologist, which I talked about earlier. She was a K through five psychologist. And we also used Maxim to provide an intervention specialist, which is a special education teacher for all of our students who are in the virtual academy. And so as you can see, that was paid, partial of that was paid out of ESSER because I know most, everything that we did with the virtual academy was paid through ESSER. So, so was the special education teacher. And just as a heads up, that number will increase. So we'll have, we'll need two intervention specialists this coming school year to work with the virtual academy.
Why, do we have more students in the virtual academy?
Yes, and this caseload of twenty-five is really too many for a special education teacher to have. So she was over her caseload, yes. So we want to start the school year off with her not being over the caseload. We'll have two intervention specialists, so there'll be room for students to either transition in or out.
Thank you.
And then the next contract is, we work with an organization called Interpreters of the Deaf and they provide interpreters for our students with hearing impairments. And we had a student move into the district, so that's a partial year payment for that one full-time person. And they will be returning, that student will still be with us. And then the last area is e-therapy. And so we've kind of talked about e-therapy a little bit. E-therapy is the organization that provides that virtual support for us. And we needed to have another access or another opportunity for some of our students to receive therapy because, as we talked about before, we couldn't find enough therapists last school year. So we had to have other options for our students to get support.
Is that just for students?
This e-therapy? No, it is not.
Can you elaborate, please?
So if there are staff members, it has to go through HR because there's a lot of confidentiality and things like that. But if there are staff members who need some type of support, they can reach out to HR, who would then reach out to us and we would, they would set up the session personally. They would receive a link to set up the session. And then they reach back out to us to let us know if the staff member did attend the session and they charge us per session, like they charge the families.
So when you say families, so are adult people in our community, I mean, at our school community can access these services too?
Yes, so the therapist that is assigned to a student works with the family as well if they see that there's some family support that needs to happen.
And if the therapist doesn't work with a student, but we have individual family members that have some trauma or that need this service, can they access it whether they're working with a student or not?
You mean through this company? Or you mean, is there something?
Through this company, I mean, the e-therapy.
Okay, so, no, I don't, I don't think we have a service right now where we just provide therapy for, for families, yeah.
I didn't think that.
It comes through the student, because, you know, it's mostly if it impacts their education, then it comes through the student and then it can trickle down to the home. Like the same with Samaritan, they don't, the therapy that they often is connected to the student and if they see that, you know, there are some deeper issues that are impacting with the family, then the family gets that support as well.
Is it twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful.
Whenever they need it.
It just is not, it excludes just family without a student. Maybe that's a gap for us, Dr. Cosby, and we can look at that gap. Because again, I wouldn't want to discount family members just because their student wasn't part of this, you know, didn't, it wasn't applicable because of the student. So I don't know how we can get supports, but maybe that's something that we can discuss.
Okay, I, yes, I'd like for us to discuss that.
And not all of it, I mean, this is good, that our students and students' families.
Oh, for sure.
And you said there were sixty-seven sessions, how many students is that?
So there were ten families, I sent that in the prior document, there were ten families. It was when you, when we first started talking about e-therapy, yeah.
There's, so there's only, there's ten families and those ten families have accessed sixty-seven sessions.
And that was up through the end of the school year, through June thirtieth.
Through June thirtieth, okay, okay.
I have a question, is it multiple kids in one family?
Sometimes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's D-E-A-F?
Yes, it is, it's a typo, sorry about that, nah.
What's the typo?
Yeah, it sure is, a big typo.
Seventeen hundred dollars?
A big typo.
No, no, no.
No, 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 the spelling.
I'm sorry?
The spelling, it says interpreters of the deaf.
D-E-A-F.
And it should be deaf, yes.
Oh, okay.
It was, you know what it probably was, an automatic correction on the computer, you know? Change things.
You could have caught that in private, Mr. Andrews. It's fine, it's fine, I'm a human being, so it happens.
So the cost is correct for the e-therapy, the seventeen hundred dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's, that's a good cost?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, John, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mallory. So Dr. Cosby, you'll get the list of all the numbers of students who are receiving services. And then if you guys could email that document to the board, that would be great. And Dr. Cosby, if you could also, that same document uploaded on board docs, that way if we ever needed to reference it, we could.
Yes, and so the, I just want to be clear, the numbers for all of our students with disabilities, that by disability, is that by category? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, who, yeah, and for these services, the ones like you didn't know how many students access the service, give us those numbers for how many students. Like you said, there were ten for the e-therapy. And then there's a max of twenty-five, you said that for the maximum special instruction? Yeah, and then you said, you know, if there's-
So, okay, so we can talk about, so when we talk about disability and we talk, when we talk about numbers, we talk about speech therapy. So I can definitely give you numbers of students who receive speech therapy. But for a school site, their caseload would be interchangeable because part of their job is just to test children. They test the child.
That's not part of-
And the child doesn't qualify, so they don't need the cert, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so they work with all the students.
Exactly.
Okay, okay.
But that's how you determine how many school sites you need because they still can only have so many.
Okay.
So many interactions, so many kids.
Sessions.
That makes sense.
Mm-hmm, it does.
That's why that number is higher for a school psychologist than it is for a speech therapist or an other.
Okay, thank you. Next item up is what day has been designated to input grades into the progress book? Who will monitor this to ensure that they are updated on the specific day?
Our current contract language says that there will be one time per week grades entered into progress book. The principals will monitor to make sure that this happens and that's what we currently have.
So do we know what day of the week it will be?
It varies by, it could be by department, by teacher. She just, according to our contract language, she just has to make sure that there is one grade in per week. Some will have more grades in for sure, you know, and if they don't have at least the one, then the principal will have a conversation with them.
Thank you. Follow-up on parent concerns from last meeting.
I did send out an email to everyone with some information. The parent concerns from the last meeting, the discussion was, I would say, about the two-point-O GPA. The parents that I spoke with and I did make the phone calls for those parents did not have a concern with the two-point-O GPA. Their concern, as a matter of fact, one of them had a student with a one-point-nine they mentioned here and one with a two-point-seven. But they were speaking on behalf of some other students that they anticipated did not have, you know, the GPA. So their concern was, would it be possible for us to do some type of, have some type of leeway for some of these students? So we did have a long discussion about that as an exec team and we had information from, you know, people who, who have a lot of information. I felt like I did gather a lot of information. Ultimately, we did decide to do a probationary period for students who have a one-point-five at this point. And then what they would have to do, is the proposed probationary opportunity, and I'm reading it from the email that I sent. It says, "The proposed probationary opportunity for fall sports is attached." It would require students with a minimum of a one-point-five to participate. They're allowed to participate in practice if they attend study table two times a week to get their grades up by the interim and then become eligible to play with the two-point-O. From the information I was able to pull, because our fall numbers are, our fall rosters are not complete yet, but based on what we had last year and who would be eligible now, there would be eighteen students who would be eligible to be on probation. And if those- And if those students had their grades improved by interim, they would be allowed to play for the remainder of the season. I did have definitive numbers on the winter and spring sports. And I did get that to you all. But those numbers were, were very low. So I, I have, I also wrote that in the letter, so let me go there and look. For both middle school and high school winter, second, that's second quarter eligibility, and spring sports, which is third quarter eligibility. The, and they had the goal of having a two point O. Winter at the middle school was seventy-five total participants in the sports with one ineligible. There were eighty-one participants in spring sports with four who would be ineligible. At the high school for winter sports, there were a total of a hundred and one athletes. Forty-four were starting ineligible at interim, but all except for fourteen were able to reach the goal of two point O. And of that fourteen, it was spread out over eight different sports. And, and when I looked at it, bowling had four of those students. So on all the other sports that were going on in the spring, there was like two or no one. For spring at the high school, they had sixty athletes. Sixteen were ineligible at interim and only one was ineligible at the end of the quarter. So that's, so all of that was in documentation. So it was very few students who ultimately were not eligible to play once we got past the fall. Because remember, last year, fall got a total leeway. We didn't start it. We announced it, we promoted it, we talked about it. And then we waited to start to spring to give everybody, you know, time to get their scores up. And then we started with spring sports. And again, the majority of the students, the vast majority, it was very few who were ineligible to play. And like I said, what we're looking at it this fall, based on what we had last year, there would be eighteen students who would be put on probation. Now those numbers, I don't know what they are exactly because their rosters haven't been finished.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for discussion.
So I didn't get a chance to get that. I was in portments all day and I don't know what time it came, so.
I think it came about noon.
Yeah, and for me, this would have been information before we recommend changing the GPA. Because the board ultimately has to vote to change it because it's a part of the student handbook. So when we went through that.
You're talking about last year?
Yeah, last year. And I saw that briefly, I don't know what that was. It had student athletic code of conduct, I don't know what it was.
Well, we have the proposed language for the probationary period. That's the only thing that's new. We already had the two point O. So this is, that's just proposed language.
Let me say this, I'm speaking for me. My children all played sports, including my daughter. They are required. You know, we just talked about how many therapists we have, right? How many more we need? We went through a tornado, we went through COVID. Some of, I spoke to one of, probably two of those students that didn't get that opportunity to play because of the GPA. And I'm not going to reiterate what the parents said. But yes, we did put, and I supported the two point O initially. We put tutoring in place. But what are we doing for tutoring? We talk about this all the time. We have a lot of students that don't have a two point O. We're focusing in on a problem that wasn't a problem. When football went to state two years, when basketball went to state, when track went to state, they had an average of a three point something GPA. We have to look to see what is it we're trying to fix? We're trying to fix something without putting the supports solidly there to say for those, I don't care if it's four, three, two, or one. You gotta know that student's story. I know one of those students' story. And it hurts. You know, I feel like I failed him in agreeing that, yeah, we can change this to a two point O. We can get them all there. We got some there, but we missed, I think you said fourteen out of forty-four. So what are we doing? What are the conditions that those fourteens are facing other than just showing up to class and just going to tutoring? What else are they dealing with? We have the mental support for that, right? So imagine where some of those students that are still dealing with things from COVID, maybe it was the loss of a father, or the loss of a grandfather, or, I don't know. And they can't, they can't get there. And the other thing is, Trotwood, we want to set the bar higher than what the state sets. What I thought our focus would be is just trying to get back into the GWOC so that we're not playing date in public in, you know, other schools and having to climb our way up to the top to play the GWOC teams. Do we know how our students even felt about that? So what is our path forward to get us back to GWOC? It was my understanding, we got kicked out because we didn't have enough of the other sports. So if we're, we're now, and trust me, we really are losing students to some of those schools that have the state-required GPA because they can go over there and compete. How many students, how many student athletes did we have come through Trotwood without a two point O and are still successful?
So.
So that's, that's all I have.
Okay, so.
I can't support it.
Okay, I, I appreciate your comments on that. My concern about that is, and I mentioned this to you before.
Right.
Then we're setting a double standard. At what point do we say, as a district, we have students, whether they're student athletes, whether they are students who are going another pathway? I mean, to graduate, they have to have a certain GPA. So it, it seems like that, that's one piece of that. To me, it feels as if that is a double standard. But that being said, if there are individual situations that we need to deal with, that was one reason why we agreed to do the probationary period. We did not have that before. And that was what the parents asked for. And that's why we put that in place. Because to your point, there may be some students who are going to struggle getting from that one point five to the two point O. So we will have the study tables, we will have opportunities for them. They can get mental health support if that's what we're talking about. But with that number of students, we can speak to them each individually and find out what their needs are and help them achieve. And we know it can happen because last year we had students who were not on their way to graduation. You remember how that started? And with intensive support, we were able to get them graduated. So I do believe that we are capable of moving our students up and hitting that mark. And that, that's all of them, I believe, I have to believe that. Because I also really do believe if they end up without a GPA for the athletes and for all of our students, that will move them forward in their lives, are we really doing them the benefit that what we say is, is our mission? You know, one hundred percent student success? Do we expect that the success is the same? No, we all agree with that. Success could be career, it could be enlistment into the military, it can be anything. And, and if they happen to be one of those athletes that are so, you know, good and everything that they make it to the NFL and, and, you know, NBA, which does happen, but it's very rare, we know that. We have to have them prepared for that next step. Also, I'm concerned and there are students that are great athletes and then they hurt their knee senior year. And then they, they, they have to fall back on their academics because the sports isn't going to be there for them. I, I would, you know, me and you talked.
We talked and we're going to agree to disagree. I'm going to agree, I disagree with some of my own family. This is a, you know, this is a tough subject. But you know, student young people hit my heart. And those two students hit my heart, one particularly. And the other thing I would say is, please understand to whoever's listening, I am not in any way saying lower the bar. No, I'm not. Because guess what? We're only talking about the athletes. What about the academics of the other students? Do we require two point O to participate in the other academic programs? Do we? I don't know. So what I'm saying is, and if you listen to any of the video, any of these recordings, I support putting tutoring in place for all of our students. And the other thing, I'm not saying in those young people, now people, young people especially, their career path that's, they might intend to take that don't take them to college, that don't take, there are other options out there. I want to make sure that we're exposing them to them, to those opportunities. And they still succeed. When we had the Trotwood Chamber event and the businesses were here, Home Depot was there. And they said, we tried to contact your school. And she's like, I got this whole box of mugs for the students. And I said, what is the GPA for a student to work eighteen? She's like, I've been with them twenty years, the other one twenty-one, the other one fifteen. There is no GPA requirement at eighteen. They provide them training, they can go to Atlanta. I'm only giving you one example. But that's what our responsibility is, is to show them there are other options. Even though you're playing football, basketball, soccer, whatever, there are other options. So no, I am in no way promoting a double standard and in no way am I lowering the bar. What I'm saying is, at least they show up. Attendance, they show up. And I know, I know we have coaches that push them along to say, if your GPA isn't up, you're going to sit the bench anyway. Regardless of what this boy said the standard should be. We have that. So that, that's where I stand. And I won't monopolize any more of the time.
No, that's good, good information. Mr. Andrews?
Everybody can hear me, right?
Can you speak in the mic because it's on recording and we have a virtual audience as well?
I have kind of mixed emotions about it.
You know what? We can't hear you. Does this work? Does this one? No, Mr. Andrews, does this work right here in front of you? Oh, that one marks, okay. Thank you. Just I want to make sure we capture this, thank you.
I don't know if it's worth capturing.
I don't know.
Okay, but I have kind of mixed emotions about, can everybody hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I coached here for, you know, a number of years. And I had required a GPA unofficially that was a little higher than that. But the main reason was because, being realistic about it, if, if students are aspiring to go to school, and I'm not up to date like just exactly currently, but at one point to go in even to a community college was like a, you had to have a minimum of two point three plus your core courses. So I, I, I can on one hand see the benefit in having a elevated GPA. On the other hand, I, I remember sitting with a mentor once and we were talking about something very similar. And he said to me, as we were looking out over the, all these folks that are out here participating, he said, for some of these young people, high school is going to be the highlight of their life. And that's just where it is. So is that really necessary? Are we doing more harm than good? It's kind of, it's kind of debatable. But I, I do agree that we need to expand, I think we need to expand the tutoring program. And it should be available as an option for, obviously for the athlete should be a requirement. But, well, it should be a requirement for, it should be a requirement for all students. But there should be, we should be elevating students. Coming out of school and going to work at Home Depot and they don't require a grade point average, that's fine. But what if a little further down the line, that student wants to elevate themselves by getting into a position of greater responsibility? I'm sure that some of their work record and experience and things like that would help. They probably provide in-store training and those things. But I also think that it, it would help our students and give them an advantage or do them a, a service of having them better prepared going out there to get those jobs anyway. I, I remember having a young lady who ended up being salutatorian, I think, her senior year and went on to one of the local universities. And they came back to visit that, that following fall and asked how things were going. And they were talking about how tempered was because they had not really learned to write well and write a good research paper and those kind of things. So I, I think that on the one hand, elevating the GPA is a good thing because it gives people, it, it, hopefully it's pushing them and making them work a little harder. And sometimes our students set their expectations too low for themselves. And you know, of course, everybody has, you know, a backstory and issues and things like that. And of course, our history is full of folks who have overcome deficits and disadvantages and things like that. And I'm not saying everybody is going to have that same, whatever it is, that same motive to make that happen. But I think that we need to expand tutoring if we're going to raise the grade point average to make it eligible, make everybody eligible for it and make it available. And when I say tutoring, I mean a quality thing, not two or three people and they're sitting there with a cafeteria full of students trying to work with them. But we actually have to increase the number of people who are going to be available for tutoring. And I think that may go back to, a source of that may go back to one of our cornerstones in getting community involved. And I think we really need to do a better job of getting out and asking folks in the community to give us some of their time to come in and help. And they don't have to be an expert, sometimes it's just a person that's there willing to keep working with somebody and keep encouraging them. Kind of like when I was growing up, my dad, his education was very, very minimal. And when I was taking geometry and calculus in high school and he'd ask, so I had my homework done, and I'd just tell him, yeah, because I knew he, he couldn't do anything with it anyway, I thought. But then what he would do is he would look at it, say, explain it to me. Now, if my explanation didn't convince him I knew what I was talking about, I had to do it over again. And I'm saying that to say, we don't necessarily have to have people tutoring our students who are really on top of everything. If we can't get them, it'd be ideal if we could. But if you have somebody that has a desire to want to see our kids and encourage them, wants to see them do well and to do better and improve, we should be able to find people in the community if we present it to the community. But we can't wait until the school year is, is about to start and start asking folks to come in. We need to be doing that now. And we need to go to all these folks and all these institutions that always talking about they want to participate and, and want to see us do better and kind of subtly challenge them to put their money where their mouth is and start coming forward.
Any other comments, Board?
Oh, yes, I've been waiting.
You have the. You have the floor, Ms. Cherry.
Um, just in reference to the two point oh period, um, in my household, a two point five was the, the GPA for, for my household. Some households is to survive. It's not even a GPA. It's just to survive. So, we have to make sure that we can capture all students. What does tutoring look like? Um, we've been talking about tutoring and tutoring and Sylvan and tutoring. What does tutoring look like for our students? You just referenced to, um, a number of students at a table with one or two individuals in there. Are they really tutors? Are they academic advisors? What does tutoring look like for our students? Um, and is every student eligible for tutoring? Do you have to have a grade point average to participate in the band? Do you have to have a grade point average to participate in choir? I mean, what are, what is our mission? What is it that we're looking for? What is it that, um, we're trying to elevate our students to? Another thing is, um, I know a young lady who came out of Dayton Public School and I, I'm not hindering Dayton Public because I'm a graduate. She had a one point nine when she came out. She has her doctor's now. So, her GPA at that time, it, it was a one point nine. But it was about what she wanted to do afterwards. So, I mean, we can go on and on about the GPA, what the requirements are. What is the probationary period? That's what I wanna know. What does tutoring look like? What's the probationary period? Um, do we have any data to support why we shouldn't have a one point nine or, or two point oh or two point three? What, I mean, with, all of us up here can give our own opinions, but only thing that gets measured is what gets done. So, what are we working towards? What does it look like? What does tutoring look like for our students? Also, I mean, we have to have, like you said, solid supports. Are we offering teachers incentives to tutor our students right here? Instead of going to Sylvan or, you know, we talked about, um, community participants. I know a lot of individuals who have graduated and were teachers and I don't know if they wanna come back and try to tutor. But what are we offering, like you said? Are we going to upper bound? Are we going to, to Wright State? Uh, what, what are we offering and what does tutoring look like? And once again, you said it was sixteen or fourteen students that did not meet the criteria?
Initially, uh, over eight sports. So, that was like two students per. And one bowling was four. So, it was like one or two or none.
So, have we reached out to those students in reference to this, this study table? Because study table and tutoring is two different things, in my, in my opinion.
Right. So tutoring, to answer that question, you know, our teachers, having come out of COVID and with all the things that were happening last year, they did not do the tutoring which they traditionally had and we're gonna offer that again. And they will get paid for it. So, they will be our first line of defense as far as tutoring is concerned. But if you'll remember, we have offered, um, Sylvan opportunity and we have not been taken up on it. So, I do anticipate that when the teachers, you know, get back to tutoring, that we'll have more, um, participation. So, you're right. Study table is a person who goes around and makes sure they're doing their homework and all. And for the most part, you're somewhat assuming that the students know what they're doing. The person helping that study table may be able to help with some things. They may be more like Mr. Andrews' father and, you know, have to question because they don't necessarily know the subject matter. But we're asking our teachers to come and do some tutoring. So, I anticipate that that will happen. Um, I know for a fact that we do have, um, um, one organization that's willing to tutor and they're using, um, students from the city, particularly, I believe, UD students and potentially some Wright State to tutor our students. And we are gonna be taking, um, students to that. That's once a week. But that's something. And we are gonna just try to get as much of that as possible. Um, you asked the probationary period. So, this is new. We're asking, we're proposing that we accept that, to give an opportunity for students who have a one point five. Um, you know, I, I think, I hear exactly what you're saying. I've been in this business too a very long time and, and stories do, you know, get to your heart. They, I get it. It does. But I remember when I interviewed here and your, um, vision was one hundred percent student success. And I said, "That seems pretty high." You know, because I'm thinking, "Man, am I gonna be, you know, charged with one hundred percent student percent success." And what I was told is, "Who's gonna decide what child gets left behind?" You know, so if we are going to, to raise our standards for our students and, and, and you, Mr. Andrews, you're right. It's a two point three now to get into most colleges. And that's, and if you wanna get into, um, a four-year college, you gotta have a good ACT or SAT if your GPA is not high or higher. So, are there, are there places that take students with stories with maybe lower GPAs potentially? So, people get opportunities. I mean, like I said, I'm sure that there are one-on-one individual situations where a coach may have, knows about a kid, talked about a situation, you know, and has asked permission to play them. I'm sure that that type of thing happens because we all have compassion for our students. But overall, I think that it is very important that we do set a bar because the research does say they will rise to the level of expectation. And, and I, I just worry if, think, we're talking about the few students who didn't make it and all the things we're gonna have in place. What are we doing to help those students who don't know to be motivated? They don't have mom at home who's saying, "You're not doing anything without a two point five." You, you bring home a C and you're sitting down on everything. A lot of our kids don't have that. We shouldn't punish them for that. We should offer that to them. We're the ones who say to, to them, "You can be anything you wanna be and I will support you and I will help you, regardless of what's going on at home." And, and I, I just, I, I hope that we maintain the two point oh with the opportunity of the, um, one point five that they would have to work on up until interim. I, I do believe if we set this bar high, I believe the students can achieve it.
Mr. Davis?
Well, um, I guess I'd just like to say, Madam, um, Superintendent, that I know it's a handful sometimes. And I understand that, um, there's a lot of upset parents in reference to what had happened. And, um, but it's for the good though, if you think about it, we wouldn't have knew if that wouldn't have happened. Um, well, we're, well, we're rebuilding our infrastructure in this sense, um, and that's for the good as well. So, you're pretty much gonna hear me say everything has been for the good, even though it's been some rough patches. But we're a strong district at this point. We're, um, we're, we're really doing some things. We, we're even looking at policies. And then we will con- continue to build infrastructure with academics, operations. Um, we have one of the best treasury departments in, I've seen in this town or the region and maybe this hemisphere. I just was telling her, uh, uh, communication about that. I haven't seen, I haven't seen nothing like the way she do numbers other than on a movie with some sisters from Wilberforce that end up telling NASA some stuff. So, I really haven't seen nothing like it. But, uh, aside from that, I'm happy to see, um, our Honorable, uh, Andrews back. Brother, I've missed you. I haven't seen you in a minute. I, I got to talk today. Yeah. I'm, I'm doing it. So, um, I just.
Mr. Davis, stay on topic.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But, um, getting back to the kids, but getting back to the kids. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
No, it's okay.
Um, but getting back to the kids, um, it's just for the good. Um, um, I don't really even feel like we're, we're threading the needle with the, the GPA. Everything we've been through from acts of God to, um, illnesses consistently, I really think it's hit the children is what we're seeing. Now, we're seeing the effects of what happened, or effects and effects of what happened. So, I don't really see it as a, a, a issue really. I see it as something that we're gonna maneuver through and that's really all I have to say about it. I, I think we're kind of, I feel robust at this point. I feel like we're, we have our five. We have you guys. We got pretty much everybody we need in this room, if the cameras could see that. I, I really feel the strength in this. And, um, I think we should strengthen those that are in, in positions of power and leadership like this. So, I will continue to do that with y'all. I don't talk a lot, but today was necessary. Forgive me, Madam President. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Um, Mr. Andrews?
One other thing that I had, that I had wanted to mention in terms of, uh, tutoring and tutoring opportunities too. Uh, and I know we've done this varying times in the past, but we should also, uh, uh, not forget another asset that we have in the, in the more immediate community that can help with tutoring our kids, and that's, uh, their peers.
That's true.
And, and if, and, and in terms of, we may not be able to monetary compensations and things, but there are other things that could be done for them to reward them for that. We could.
We can pay them.
Okay. And, or they could get some kind of a, uh, maybe some kind of accreditations and things like that.
Absolutely. Okay, I, what I, what I'd like to do is I, I'm gonna propose a retreat for this board, okay, at, at some specified date because this is a really good conversation and it's a serious conversation. But I'm gonna add my two and a half cent. And my thoughts, Mr. Andrews hit it the nail on the head. When he said, "In my house, my dad would say, 'What did you learn? What does this mean?'" I have lived experience where one of my children was in a school with no grades and no GPA. What they had to do was exactly what Mr. Andrews said. They didn't move on. They didn't go on until they understood the content. Guys, we've got people in this district with four point five GPAs, three points, five points, seven points, two points, and we still hit zero indicators from the state. I'm just keeping it real on that level. And if we look at where we are, GPAs and grades can be very subjective. Very influential based on who's given the grade. A hundred percent of those students graduated with no grade, but with education and content. A hundred percent of those students went to college. Ninety percent of those students graduated and went on to do great, great things. So, I wanna, I want us to, you know, I know we're talking about a GPA. I want us to focus on how we educate kids. How do we educate students? I don't care if their GPA is a, is a point one or a five point, whatever. How do we educate kids? Because we got all these people running around, honestly, with the two point five and better, uh, you know. However, what does that look like when you capture it by standards? So, I think that we have to look outside of the box. I like what Ms. Cherry said. What does the GPA have to be to be in the band? On the dance team as a cheerleader? What does it look like? Uh, no, I don't think anybody's ever asked that question, Ms. Cherry, and thank you for presenting that.
In the academic one, what is it?
What does it look like, the academic one? So, I, I, I think that this conversation should be revisited because I, I'm not gonna say this, but, um, well, I will say this. We are just not a sports district. We're here to educate kids. We are. And that's all kids, no matter what their GPAs are, where they started. Started from the bottom, they're in the middle, at the top. It doesn't matter. We're here for that reason. As a matter of fact, our charge as a Board of Education is to educate. And not, you know, marching band, I'm just saying, or cheerleader or sports. That's all ancillary. We have kids who graduate from here with a three point, two point, whatever, and they go to college. And I, I have experienced this because I have a street that has college professors and they stop me in my driveway and say, "Why can't your kids read?" Two point five, three point oh, GPA, As, Bs, subjective. Doesn't matter. If we talk about a hundred percent student success, that means kids can read. That means kids can write. That means kids can do math. That means kids can compete and be successful. And we talk about a holistic wraparound support around our children and our, and our kids. We talk about mental health and we talk about tutoring. I, I'm just, my ears are bleeding with tutoring. I've been listening to tutoring for seventeen years and we still haven't, in my opinion, gotten it like we need to get it. Because there are still parents saying, "How do we access it? Does it exist? My kid can't get it." So, we have to do something different and that is what I'm saying. And these wraparound services, they need the mental health. They need the therapist and the therapy. They need the academics, but they also need ancillary activities. They need sports. They need arts. They need music. And I would hate, and this is Denise Moore, that because I could, wasn't good at passing tests, because my GPA doesn't reflect who I am, we had at one time a model. We are not our, what did we say, um, our ranking in the state. We are not our ranking. We are not that. We are much more. I think our kids are that too. We are not our letter grade. That's what it was. Trotwood said that. Well, I don't think a lot of times our kids are just their later, letter grade. They're way more than that. And an opportunity to have exposure to play football, basketball, soccer, bowling, compete in robotics, compete in ROTC, and all of it, okay? You guys get it. Guess what? I don't wanna limit their opportunity. Because that point one nine, one point nine or one point student who turned into a doctoral student, I know her. She's related to me. And I'm just glad somebody didn't give up on her and didn't say, "You can't do this or you can't do this because you don't meet the standard." So, as a Board of Education, I challenge us to sit down, have a retreat, talk about what we want this to look like. If I had my wish in a perfect world, we deal away with grades, we deal away with GPAs and we look at standards, education, academics, and where people are. What have you learned here in Trotwood? And we can compute that into some, a measurable number. Other schools have done it. I've seen it. I've lived that experience. So, given that, Board, are you open to a retreat at some point? Are you open to further discussion?
Certainly open to further discussion. I think, uh, one of our Achilles' heels, as we mentioned all this up here, is we do not do a good job of getting the word out about what is available. We don't do it consistently and we don't do it in a way that, uh, impacts the greater body. We are not just an athletic school and that ticks me off when people try to say that. Because we've got, I mean, I, I could sit here, if I really sat here and wanted to do it, I could come up with doctors, lawyers, actors, actresses, meteorologists, almost anything that you wanna think of in terms of vocations, entrepreneurs, bankers, everything else. We've got them that have come out of here. And a lot of them were not athletes. They were students who came to school and, and they did what they needed to do. But we, I think also, we need as a Board to charge the district with thinking out of the box. And, and, but not just charge them with it. Let everybody know that we have your back. We have your back. Because we keep trying to jump, jump through hoops that are set for us that maybe, uh, are not relevant to what it is that we need to be doing to get our kids where they need to be. And so, we need to go ahead and, 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 and do some things, uh, to move ourselves forward, even if they are not as conventional as some people prefer or be comfortable with.
And, and that is why we, I propose a retreat for this Board. If we are, if we keep doing what we've been doing, the results are not gonna change. I agree with Mr. Andrews. Maybe we're gonna have to be a bit unconventional. We should dare to be unconventional because we've not gotten the outcome, expected outcomes that we want for our children. So, given that, uh, Board, I will ask at some point, um, within the next couple days, that we look at a date. And that would not just include the Board. Uh, Dr. Cosby, that would be yourself and whomever you feel that needed to be there. I'm thinking directors, okay? I'm thinking some principals. I'm thinking, um, I, I, I am thinking some teachers. How about teachers, okay? I'm thinking some teachers. Because we're, what you said is something radical. And what I said is something really radical. But I know it works because I've been proof of that. And so, again, um, that leads the conversation to a different level. And who knows what all of us will come up with together. But it'll be something that's equitable. It'll be something that, um, that embraces everybody, no matter where you are in this district. No matter what you're challenged with, it will not exclude you. And that way, we can do, we get back to the business of. And that way, we can do, we get back to the business of educating kids. So, Dr. Cosby, I just, I wanted to say that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it back over to you. I know that you shared that. You're gonna get your, the plan together, whatever that plan you said that it looks like.
Yes, because we have to do something ASAP as they are trying to build their rosters for the fall teams.
Well, the only way that, if that is not the case, it would be the Board to make a motion that we do something differently, okay? And that would change the trajectory of the plan and what was done in the past. So, you know, and I want to say that, because you're right. The whole situation with getting together and sitting down and brainstorming, that will happen, and it probably will impact things down the road. But as it stands now, you know, you have your plan. If the Board feels different, there can always be a motion on the floor to do whatever it is that you guys would prefer to do, and we could take a vote, call the roll, and then whatever the vote outcome is, that is the vote outcome. And then we move on.
I would like to just make one statement. One of the things that, as we talk about thinking outside of the box, and I hear you and I appreciate that, and I am familiar, like you said, with programs, we've done that type of thing. But I think that only one caution is, as our students move forward in their lives, there are expectations, there are set, you know, GPAs and things that you have to do. And I'm not saying that we have to. I'm just saying if we don't do that, we have to understand, you know, the potential consequences for them. And also, I want to give a reminder, if you're talking about private schools, if you're talking about specialty schools, they always have the option of sending their students back to us. So, sometimes their numbers look one way, but in fact, the numbers may not be accurate.
Our numbers may not be accurate either. No, numbers, again, are subjective, okay? Grades are that way too. So, I do understand what you're saying, Dr. Cosby. I just wanted everybody to have a voice on the D's, and that's all, okay? So, what I understand, and I just want clarification, you've come up with some sort of plan.
Yes, probationary period.
Probationary plan. You're going to share that plan with this Board, okay? Along the lines of how we are going to proceed now ASAP, you know, 'cause it sounds like you wanna get something in place pretty soon, correct?
I actually have that written out, and I did send it to you, what it would look like if we were to make that change for the probationary period of one point five. And it says that the students would participate, as I said, in study table at minimum. See, whatever you put is at minimum. We can have them have more tutoring as much as they can get, but they would have to pull that GPA to the two point oh by interim. So, that's what that proposal is. Currently, we have a two point oh GPA, and that is a way to allow students who fall below that to have an opportunity to participate this year, based on all the things that we have been through.
Well, we'll take a look at that information, and that's just every Board member. You know, we look at it, and then whatever questions we have are concerned, we bring them forward.
What is our plan to get back into G W O? And so, and also, what will our programs be for athletics? And we're target, I'm gonna remind this Board too. We've targeted to make sure that the athletes, right, are performing at a two point oh. Who, Board, are you holding accountable for those others, which is the majority number bigger than those athletes? Who are you holding accountable to make sure they're performing? Because they're not asking, because they're not looking to go and play this week. They're under the radar. Nobody really cares. Nobody's really tracking them to make sure that at the end of the
Semester.
Semester or whatever, that they have a two point oh. Because if we were doing that district, we would be a hundred percent student success. And that's all I have to say.
I know anything where people try out for, there is typically a GPA requirement. For other things that are associated with classes, participating in clubs like that, no. There would not be, you know, if you wanna be in the art club, anyone can be in the art club, you know. But if you're trying out, then there is generally a GPA requirement along with then skills requirement.
Can we get the GPA for all of our, I know we're still in negotiations. We don't have them all maybe codified yet, but can we get what the GPA is for all of our extracurriculars?
And does that mean that maybe we need to increase every tryout sport to two point oh? Not just football. I mean, I'm just saying. I mean, if we're looking at equity, and you're saying what you're saying.
We're concerned about athletics.
And we're concerned about athletics, but guess what? Does it make sense? Why don't we just focusing in on football?
I'm just asking you all.
Okay, I mean.
I don't think we're just focusing on football. I think we would.
No, no.
It's anything that you try out.
Is everything, it's two point oh, okay?
All the other sports, anything that you're trying out for, like cheerleaders.
Everything is two point oh. It's all of it. Okay. So.
A real weakness with our athletic program in terms of trying to build a
To grow it?
To grow it, is we have to, we have to really start focusing in on a better quality feeder program. It has to be consistent. When I say feeder program, I'm talking about programs at the seventh, eighth grade level. And it's not, it's not a slam on the middle school at all by any means. But I'm saying, if we, if we wanna be able to be competitive in some of these minor sports, which is always what people try to harp on is why they don't want us in their conference, we can't wait until they get to high school to learn all the intricacies of playing baseball, or playing softball, and that kinda thing. They have to start earlier. And the sports that we're really successful in, our kids do start early. They start even earlier than middle school. But I'm saying, at least at middle school, we can't necessarily mandate what the community can offer. But at the middle school level, if we can have some consistency in make that, and make those sports, teaching sports, to teach our kids the background and the foundation for those things, it will pay off as we get into high school. The last good soccer teams we had here a few years ago, those kids all played say soccer coming up, and almost every one of them, and then they stayed with it instead of branching off into basketball, footballs they got in high school, and we had some competitive soccer. But then it went away when they graduated. And it went away because we didn't, we didn't even longer have the say program. And so, a lot of our kids end up going somewhere else to get those things. And then, you know, maybe they just don't play, or they end up going somewhere else. So, I think we have to, and to me, that's another discussion.
Yeah, and that's why I said, I think that we do need a retreat, because we can't discuss, and this is for the audience. The Board cannot meet as a collective body unless it is a public meeting. We cannot, we don't meet on the weekends and sit around and talk. That is illegal. We only work in public. So, it requires a retreat, a workshop, or a meeting. So, we will definitely get that on the books. I'm gonna move on, if I may. How many new and returning students do we have?
Okay, I have that information. I actually have it on a piece of paper, which I will put on here, but I have that information for you. We have remaining students enrolled from twenty-one to twenty-two is two thousand three hundred and ten. Newly enrolled students is two hundred and sixteen. Those students who have withdrawn since seven, one, twenty-two is eighty-six. Our current twenty-two, twenty-three enrollment is two thousand four hundred and forty students. We don't know. That number will, of course, change. It changes every year. We have some students who won't start school till after Labor Day, because that's just what families do. We have some students who will be enrolled and who will go someplace else. We have a very, as you all know, transient community, but as it stands right now, our current enrollment is two thousand four hundred and forty students.
Any questions?
That's a good number, continue.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
It's a good number of returning students.
Oh, very good number of returning students. Okay, next, do we have certified teachers for core classes?
Yes, and I talked with HR to confirm that. We have all of our core classes covered at this point. We have two people waiting on their license, as they said, to flip. We're waiting on the credentials to come through. We are very optimistic. They were involved today in our new teacher orientation. The one was from out of state, and one there looking at the credential, and so, we would find out. But if not, then we are just, we would get those hired. So, right now, we have all of our core classes filled, so we're pretty excited about that.
Thank you. Treasure comments?
Yes. On Board docs, I have attached the, and I gave you a hard copy as well, attached the Treasures update under executive, under the executive tab. There's four topics, staffing, STRS language change that we're looking at, inventory conversion, and we're converting our inventory system from the old classic to the new redesign. And then I just wanted to shout out, we did several trainings this week, and for the administrators and clericals, and there was a wide range of topics that we went over. And we also were able to have an orientation today for the new hires. And so, then there's other information on the document as well. The other thing I would like to just say, condolences to Dr. Cosmo and loss of her mother-in-law.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, my prayers are with you and your family. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Superintendent comments?
Yes, I'll just quickly share, this has been quite the week for us. Our administrators have been in training or giving training all week. So, on Monday, we participated with the other sixteen districts in the ESC's training, and that was very good, and we also have time to do team time when we do that particular training. On Tuesday, we were down at Saint Clair for our first day of our administrative retreat, and it was very great. Everybody shared their information. I got an opportunity to talk about my culture with accountability to my principals, to all of our administrative team. And we heard from all of the different directors. They did presentations to our administrative team throughout the district, so we're really excited. And we did part two here in the building on Wednesday, and part two went very well. We did do our employee code of conduct training at the start of the day. And again, we're holding everybody, from students to, you know, staff. All of us are holding everyone accountable this year, and so, it's important that we know what the expectations for staff and students are. So, we spent quite a bit of time doing that today. As Ms. Allen just mentioned, we had a great day with sixty new staff members at our orientation that started at eight this morning and went till three. It was a lot of great information shared with our new staff, and they were so excited to be here. They are very ready. They feel like, they felt a very good culture today. They talked about that to me, so it was a very good day. We also had freshman orientation. I went over and spoke with the freshmen, and they looked like a good crowd. They're freshmen. They're a little rowdy, bawdy, but but they looked very good. They were there, and they were ready. And so, I did tell them the freshman year is very important, and this is where they start, you know. And so, to take it seriously and to find someone, teacher, peer, to help them through this. So, I'm excited. We've had a great week, and got one more day of the week tomorrow. That's all I have.
Thank you. Board comments. Mr. Davis?
Comment about band. Our kids are currently at band camp, and they'll be back tomorrow about noon. So, the parents that do have children in band, make sure you get your children around noon. Mr. Bean is telling me right here. And also, you guys be ready for Saturday's ELC Back to School Bash. That's gonna be their first performance of the year that they've been practicing for. And the students will be there by eleven thirty. Performance will be around noon, so ramination. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Cherry?
Yes. First of all, I wanna say to Ms. Mallory, thank you for providing us with this information. I really do appreciate it. I also wanted to say, I had the opportunity to visit the virtual open house yesterday, and it was well. Seen a lot of young ladies trying out for volleyball, so, you know, students are just trying to get back acclimated to, you know, Trotwood and being in the school. Also, I wanted to say, Mr. Andrews, you made a statement about the Board and challenging the district. I think the Board needs, we need to challenge ourselves first, then maneuver out. So, it starts with the Board, and I've been saying, and I've been saying that we have some work to do. In other districts, there, you know, the hoops don't define who we are in other districts. So, I think we need to work collaboratively here. And also, a GPA doesn't define who you are, and a test score doesn't define who you are either. So, we need to make sure we focus on what it is we need to focus to move our district forward. My condolences to you and your family.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews, any comments?
No, I thought that tonight was pretty productive, and I'm looking forward to just carrying this on and really coming up with some concrete things. I did meet a gentleman at work that would be interested in coming out and talking about careers and potential for careers in trades. And I'm very proud of local residents and the whole thing, so I got his information, and I'll just.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jeter Freeman?
Probably said enough. You all already know, we can always agree to disagree respectfully, you know. That's how the best ideas come about, and my condolences to you and your mother-in-law. This was a good conversation. It was a good starting point. We're doing great things, I hear, getting ready to go back into school. Kim Miller-Smith, who I worked with at OSBA on the Student Achievement Leadership Team, said she was in the district, and she complimented what a warm and wonderful group of people we have. So, I wanted to make sure I pass that on. Janice, as always, thank you. I like this, and I've seen it. Ms. Mallory, thank you for pulling together all of those services we have, because it was like one pop up here, one pop up here. It's like, thank you for putting. I was gonna, I was gonna cross-check you, but okay. Yeah, but no, thank you for putting it all together, so it makes sense to us. And this is gonna be a great year. We're gonna work together. And please understand, we all have different roles, so we have to respect that, you know. We sit in different seats, so when we're at, speak for myself. So, when I'm asking questions, it's in my role here. It's never anything personal. And so, we're gonna move forward. We're gonna agree to disagree, and we're gonna do the best job we can. Ramination.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. That was awesome. As a matter of fact, echo, I echo all of that. I wanna say my condolences to you and your family. We'll keep you lifted in prayer.
Appreciate it.
Also, Ms. Allen, thank you. Like Ms. Jeter Freeman said, with our Also, Ms. Allen, thank you. Like Ms. Jeter Freeman said, with our budgets, that's important. And I just want to say that when we are sitting up here on the DS and we're having these conversations, these are dialogues. These are necessary, because what it does, it opens up each and every one of us like a parachute, and helps us to understand maybe a different perspective. So there are times when we sit here, and it has been said that, oh my gosh, they're negative, or it's, you know, pessimistic, or, or they're attacking the superintendent, or nobody ever says they're attacking the board chair, but that's okay. We are talking, and this is what we do. I would be disappointed if I didn't have a board that I work with that had an opinion, that had a comment, or an idea, or a suggestion, or that would ask questions. Because that's why we're here. So in no way, shape, or form is this an indictment on anyone. There is no finger pointing, and there is no blame and shame. It is the job that we do. It's the role that we play. It's the responsibility that we have as a board. I want to say thank you for, all of you for being here tonight. I'm so excited about the beginning of the school year. Mr. Davis, share what's going on. The Back to School Bash, the convocation is the twelfth, correct?
Yes, it's the twelfth. It'll start with.
Is the twelfth.
Breakfast at seven forty-five, and the meeting itself will start at nine.
Yes, yes. So, board, that's a big deal for our board, okay? It's opening day. It's so important, so if you can make it, please, please be there, okay? Other than that, it's just a couple, a week, right? A week away, not even? All right, so I am ready to rock and roll. I'm excited for everyone. We're gonna have an awesome school year. We're gonna have a great school year. And you know what? We are gonna think out of the box, and we are gonna challenge ourselves, Ms. Cherry. We are going to hold ourselves accountable as a governance body of this district, so that that will trickle down into the district. So again, without further ado, I now need a motion to prepare for conduct or review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment per ORC 121.22G4, and B, to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual per BOE policy 1066 and ORC 121.22G1. It's been properly moved and seconded. Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes. Motion passes. We are now going to enter into executive session at seven twenty-four PM, and action will be taken. Thank you.
Okay, the board is back in session. I want to declare us out of executive session at 8:22 PM. We will now move on to our final item, and that is the board report items. We have, the first item A is action for the approval of the policy updates. I need a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, motion passes. The policy update approval has been approved. Item B, approval of the superintendent's amended contract.
I'll move.
I pass.
It's been properly moved? I'm sorry?
I second.
Oh, okay. You said you passed. But I heard that, and I was like, "Pass?" He must have meant seconded, right? You okay, Dr. Cosby?
I was wondering.
You see, I didn't even hear it. Did you hear? I was just gonna go on. It's been properly moved by Vice President, Ms. Jeter Freeman, and it has been seconded by Mr. Davis. Any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, motion passes. The superintendent's amended contract has been approved. Item C, approval of the treasurer's three-year new contract, August 1st, 2022 through July 31st, 2025. I need a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Not passed, seconded. Are there any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, motion passes. The treasurer's three-year new contract, August 1st, 2022 through July 31st, 2025 has been approved. I now need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions?
Thank you both.
No.
Thank you. Thank you, and congratulations on your new contract and on your amendment, Dr. Cosby.
Thank you.
Being none, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, motion passes. Meeting adjourned.